Can everyone stand for the pledge, please? Mr. Mayhew, can you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, a moment of silence for Mr. Hendricks, who passed, who was a former Gallevilleville Fire Department Chief, and for the men and women in the armed forces. Thank you. And Walter, before we do public participation, I'd just like to take a moment, if I could. And I would like to have Brian and Amanda Marshall come up for a moment. And Brian and Amanda Mayhew own a company called Heartsmart. And what these are are defibrillators. And those are for a bunch of people that unfortunately are having a heart attack, their heart stops, and you need this to reactivate your heart. And I personally, from the bottom of my heart, want to thank you for donating these defibrillators for our town buildings so that in case something happens, we have the ability to restart someone's heart.
Wow.[102.81][102.81][applause]
There we go, Mike Zarba.
All right, here we go, three, two, one.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Okay.
Thank you very much.[144.41][144.41][applause] Yes, sir.
John Batista, please.
Hello, I am Dr. John Batista of ADH Chineski Road, speaking on behalf of some of my neighbors on Chineski Road and the Northville area. At the last town meeting on December 10th, 2018, Mike Zarba, Director of Public Works, and Dan Stanton, Town Engineer, submitted a plan with a map proposing a two-lane, four-sided, double-box culvert bridge to replace the existing one-lane span bridge on Chineski Road, Ascenic Road. This plan would widen the bridge and adjoining highway from 20 to 24 feet, slightly flatten the grade of the road, and is expected to increase road speeds near and at the road to be in accord with the rest of the road. The submission of this proposal violates the process put forward in the town of New Milford Scenic Road Preservation Act, Chapter 17A-7G, Article 4, which states designated scenic highways should never be widened unless the amount of traffic, as determined by a factual study commissioned by the town of New Milford, demands it to keep the road in good and sufficient repair and passable condition. Minutes of the December 10th, 2018, Town Council Meeting report that Mr. Zarba said he is not aware of any facts about speed on this road. At the December 10th Town Council Meeting, Town Council Members Haider and Samansky alluded to the fact that no traffic engineering study has been commissioned by the town. To quote Ms. Haider, "This is a scenic road which requires a factual study of traffic." We concur with Town Council Members Haider and Samansky that we are not aware of any such traffic study. Because of this, this proposal should be considered to be a violation of the Scenic Roads Preservation Act and subject to a fine not exceeding $100 per day to be enforced by the zoning enforcement officer. In fact, the submitted proposal is not a scenic road alternation proposal, but a bridge replacement proposal which did not take into account the scenic road ordinance with regard to the need for a traffic study, preserving widths, grades, slowing traffic, appropriate materials, and other dimensions of the standards for altering a scenic road. Despite this, according to Chapter 17A-7, applications for alteration of a scenic road at this meeting, you may accept this proposal and send it to Planning Commission and establish with the consent of the Town Council and an advisory committee to consider this proposal. However, to do so would leave you open to legal liability, the possibility that the proposal will be summarily rejected as no mandatory traffic study was completed before its submission. As an alternative, we recommend the proposal be rejected, that the mandated traffic study be completed, and a new proposal for the alteration of the Chineski Road Bridge be submitted that clearly articulates how it is in accord with the Scenic Road Preservation Act. From a phone conversation I personally had with the mayor in early January, it appears that the mayor may have already accepted the aforementioned proposal and be in the process of calling for the establishment of an advisory committee. If this were to be the case, the mayor would have violated the scenic road protocols, Chapter 17A-7, alteration of improved procedure. This section calls for any proposal to alter a scenic road to be considered at the next scheduled town meeting, that is today, to be passed on to the Planning Commission and with the approval of Town Council, form an advisory committee. Again, we strongly suggest you do not approve the formation of advisory committee, nor send a proposal on to the Planning Committee. Instead, commission a factual traffic study and assert that any proposal to alter the bridge on Chineski Road must follow mandated procedures and adhere to scenic road stipulations.
John, you have another minute, please.
Again, to not do so will only lead to possible legal difficulties, fines, and annulments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Thanks.
Irene 205, Pumpkin Hill Road.
Hi, I'm not going to talk about bridges, but I am going to talk about rivers.
Can I ask your last name?
Scrubila.
Thank you.
Scrubila. Do you want me to spell it?
No, I got it.
No, okay. The Clean Water Act is a federal law that regulates the discharge of pollutants to the nation's surface waters, including lakes, rivers, streams, wetlands, and coastal areas like the Hoosatonic and the Asfotuck. I'm sure you've all probably heard of it. I'm going to guess that most of you were alive when it was first instituted. Prior to its enactment under Richard Nixon, the nation's waterways were under assault, perhaps most notably when the Cuyahoga River caught fire again one June in 1969. Many feel this horrific event was the catalyst for this legislation because the river actually burned for days. This is in Ohio. I hope I'm saying that right, Cuyahoga. I don't know if there are any Buckeyes here.
Kyuga.
He's nodding.
Kyuga.
Oh, I've heard there are two. Well, anyway. Net-net. The original goal of the Clean Water Act was to eliminate discharge from untreated water waste from municipal and industrial sources and making waterways safe for swimming and fishing and, you know, not catching fire. The Act has been credited with significantly reducing the amount of pollution that enters the nation's waterways from point sources or municipal and industrial discharges. It's usually like when you see a big pipe with nasty crap coming out. As of 1998, 60% of American rivers, lakes, and shorefront were considered clean enough for swimming and fishing. By the late 1990s, the EPA had changed its focus under the Clean Water Act to emphasize eliminating non-point source pollution like chemicals from agricultural runoff or erosion from logging or construction activities. As scientists increasingly recognize the value of wetlands in filtering out pollution, the EPA also began to emphasize wetlands protection under the Clean Water Act. Wetlands are kind of like nature's Brita filters. They help purify the water, and that's really what makes them so important. It makes it safe for drinking, swimming, sailing, kayaking, and fishing, or just enjoying the day and having your kids run into shallow water. Sadly, recently, the Clean Water Act of 1972 has been gutted, specifically the part that addresses wetlands and tributaries such as the Ten Mile River, the Still River, the Pamparog? Am I saying that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And the Shephog. Despite the name, these are actually not main rivers. They're really considered secondary. And this gutting is going to affect all these rivers and streams in New Milford. It's going to affect drinking water for 100 million people in the United States, and it's going to remove protections for the major portions of wetlands. 60% of our waters and wetlands are being affected. So, and well, there's more. As you know, GE manufactures and serviced electrical transformers containing PCBs from 1932 to 1977. The EPA banned PCBs in 1979 because they caused health problems, including cancer. And although the plant is located in Pittsfield, Massachusetts, it actually has affected the entire Hoosatonic, which flows for 150 miles, part of it through New Milford. And I don't know if, there's still a lot of discussion going on in terms of payment and just retribution and monetary discussions, but GE is actually looking to start dumping more into Massachusetts. And that's really of concern to me because I like to drink water, and it'd be nice to go kayaking once in a while and, you know, not grow an extra limb. Our waterways are under siege, and given the lack of concern on the federal level, it's really up to the states and, yes, the towns to step up and intervene. And this is why I'm going to ask each and every one of you to make time and go to a film screening at the library. The film is called What Lies Upstream. It's a documentary about water contamination. And there's going to be someone from the Atlantic State Rural and Water and Wastewater Association who's going to specifically discuss the ramifications for Connecticut. And this is really important. I'm also going to ask you to-
Irene, you have another minute, please.
I'll be done by then. I'm also going to ask you to reach out to your state representatives and senator because it's really up to our state legislatures to act, to protect our waterways too, since the federal government sadly is not stepping up at this time. And also, our state senator is on the Environment Committee, and he seems a little bit too interested in killing bears and doves and not really interested in cleaning the water. So maybe you can help refocus his energy, and it's important for them to be knowledgeable about this too. So if you see Mr. Buckby at Big Y, please invite him. And if you see Mr. Minor, please invite him too.
When is the showing? You didn't tell them.
It's, oh, it's July 20. I'm sorry, I said July. My brain is thinking July because it's so cold. It's January 24th. You can pick up flyers at the library. Sadly, I didn't bring any. Thank you for your time, and I hope to see you all there. There's going to be a buffet, so bring the date.
Robert Cambino, please.
My name's Robert Cambino, for Old Mill Road. I'm president of the 70-plus member of the Northville Residents Association, probably will know that. And the association has supported the scenic road ordinance since its inception in 88, and even when it was revised in 98. There are 27 scenic roads in New Milford, and Chineski Road, as Dr. Batista talked about, is one of them, designated in 87. With regard to Chineski Road, the Association Board of Directors requests that you, Town Council, adhere to the ordinance and the ordinance statement of purpose and then comply with its procedures for the alteration that's being requested by Public Works. Now, you know, sometimes natural disasters happen, and they call for quick response. And there was one on Old Mill Road where I live, a number of years ago. We had a big hurricane and water, and it actually washed out a piece of the embankment and was threatening the road to go right down into the river, a real washout, right near Carlson's Ridge. Well, no application for an alteration was needed or required from the scenic road ordinance because the emergency situation was evident. But lately, we noticed activity that we feel that compliance is required for Chineski Road. There's no natural disaster there compelling an alteration. There's another one on Mud Pond Road that was designated in 87, and they're having a bridge replacement, and apparently no natural disaster either, and no studies or no advisory committee has been required, even though it's a work in progress. Also, I might add that it's in an endangered species area. And I don't know whether you've gotten an NDDB. You can look that up. You know, go in and get a reference to take a look at what endangered species are there and what could, you know, cause a problem by a bridge replacement. By the way, Chineski Road doesn't have that, so we don't need that permit. Many of butters on that road want that bridge. That's the Mud Pond Road. And maybe there is an emergency that we don't know of, or maybe the butters don't care about the ordinance. But we, in this community, do, and want to make sure that it's followed. So the association is asking a Town Council to remind Public Works Department, that's the one, to do their due diligence with roads that are part of the scenic road ordinance. These roads really contribute to the scenic beauty that makes our town such a real nice place to live, and we would like to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Robert. Helen Applebaum, please. Helen? Applebaum? Hello?
No, she's not here.
Apparently not. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. You have your schedule. Thank you. Next, I'd like to move on to the mayor's remarks. These will be briefed this evening. First is concerning the transformer move that will be tomorrow, which is January 15th. It will start at Pickett District Road at 8:00 PM. The timetable is a road, moving road closure from Pickett District Road all the way up through Galleville to 55 to New York State. Meaning a moving road closure means as the vehicle moves, which is approximately between three and five miles per hour, once it goes by you, the road will be open. If it's not by you yet and you see the police cars coming towards you, the road is going to be closed. It will be open for first responders in case of emergency. So I just want everybody to be clear. We posted this on social media sites. I sent out an Everbridge to our residents that are on there. We also had Public Works with their help. We took the FEMA trailer, which has the sign on it, by Still River, so that all of our residents can be updated as to the transformer move. Secondly, again, as we did in memorial to former past Chief of Galleville, Mr. Hendricks, may his memory be eternal. We're continuing now to work on our budget for this next year, which is '19 and '20. I've been meeting with the department heads. We've been reviewing the budgets on a line-by-line item. Once we complete this as per our charter, it then will go to the Town Council. It will then go to the Board of Finance and then to the public. We will have joint hearings, as we have every year, which is going to be Board of Finance, Town Council, as we review the budgets. The Board of Ed will then bring in their request as well, and then the Town Council can make their adjustments, and then the Board of Finance. We've also been working with our Board of Education partners when it comes to capital requirements. I've been meeting with them about every 10 days. We'll be meeting with them again this week again to talk about roof replacement, the timing of the roof replacements, and all of their capital items that the Board of Ed, as well as the town, needs, not moving into this year, but also within the next five years, so that we can properly plan for our taxpayers and for our residents and for our business community. Tonight, we're going to be interviewing and making, I'm making a recommendation to hire a new tax assessor. Tax assessor position is very important to our town. I'm very excited about the candidate that's going to be coming before you tonight. Very excited. The next is, we're continuing with our road program. We started it last year. We're continuing it this year. What we're doing now is we're going in the planning stages. We're engineering the roads that we're going to be working on. We're making sure that they're done in the most reasonable, cost-effective, and safe manner for our public. Reason being is so we can do more roads, because a lot of roads need help. Speaking of roads, Chineski Bridge, as was just talked about tonight. We are going to comply with the scenic road ordinance because that's the wishes of our public, and that's our charter. So we are going to be doing that. Rest assured. Also, with our road program, our pothole machine is going to be coming. It's going to be coming mid-February. And what's that going to do? That's going to help our workforce fix our potholes with a state-of-the-art machine that takes one guy. More efficient, more pothole work, better for our community. So I'm very excited about that. That's coming in. Another thing too, I'd like to thank the Rotary. The Rotary, this past December, I went to their meeting, and they donated $14,300 to help New Milford move forward to different civic organizations, so I thank the Rotary And economic development. New businesses are moving into town. See that over on Bank Street? Wonderful. Barista's Coffee, great. Got the River Cafe just opened up. Great soups, got to try it. Wonderful. More people are moving. You can see new things opening up. Go right down Route 7, so I'm very excited about that. Our Economic Development Director, we're continuing to work with our headhunter there, and we've got some very viable candidates that we're interviewing, and hopefully soon we can make a very good announcement about moving this town forward. So I'm very excited about that. And with that being said, I'd like to move on to the next item on the agenda, which would be our Consent Agenda.
Item four, can I have a motion to approve items A through E on the Consent Agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
Sorry. So, from the public comments, words are important. I have two changes for the meeting minutes. On page, on the last, next to last page, page nine of 10, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 paragraphs down. Mayor Bass said the town will follow the improvement procedure. I believe Mayor Bass actually said we would follow the ordinance and will refer to the Planning Commission as well as the Committee. Let's be clear about that, so there's no confusion. And on page 10 of 10, me, second, first item under number 13, Mrs. He just said the agencies are in limbo, but people are using the facility, and there needs to be one point of contact. What I said was, while we are determining what to do with the building, and it doesn't look like that's going to happen anytime soon, we need a fee structure comparable to what other organizations like the Board of Education charges so that we can cover as much cost as possible while we determine the best use of our properties. Those are my two changes.
Any discussion, including the changes, for approving the Consent Agenda? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
Item five, move to the, accept the following appointments and reappointments. I won't, I'll just read you the heading here for the record. Health Director for the town of New Milford, it's a four-year term. Zoning Board of Appeals, reappointment. The Health Director is also a reappointment. Zoning Commission, two reappointments, an alternate. Library Board of Trustees, an appointment of an alternate. Board of Finance, an appointment per the charter change. Board of Finance, an appointment to an alternate, filling the position of the charter change. Board of Finance, appointment, new position per the charter change.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Walter?
Board of Finance, Board of Finance, Board of Finance. Did we get any recommendations from the Democratic Town Committee?
On Board of Finance?
Yeah.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Item six, move that we enter into executive session for two items. Item A is a discussion concerning the candidate for tax assessor. We invite Personnel Director Greg Valero. And then we'll move to item B, which is discussion regarding sale of town properties, and we'd invite Attorney Matt Briams into that one.
Second.
Any discussion to go into executive session? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Out of executive session, there were no votes taken, so I'd like to move on. No motions were made. So next, I'd like to go to the-
Item seven?
Yep. Possible action for the position of the tax assessor. Katie?
Move to approve the appointment of Brian Lastra as tax assessor of New Milford at a starting salary of $100,000, effective January 28, 2019.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Congratulations. Brian, would you like to say a couple things to the, to the public?
It's your first shot.[1592.74][1592.74][laughter] Well, as your new assessor, I'm looking forward to working for the town, and I have an open-door policy in the sense that if you have issues, you have questions, don't be afraid to, you know, come into the office and talk to me or email me, whatever. So I'm here to serve you and to serve the town. So I appreciate this opportunity very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second item, call seven D.
Yes.
Move to authorize Mayor Bass to call special town meeting at 6:15 PM on January 28th in the Paul Martin Town Hall with-
I think we need to suspend the rules first, so we don't make a motion.
Well, how can we manage that? Yes, a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, now we can add-
Adding seven A. With respect to the property at 82 Perry Drive, I move to authorize the mayor to call special town meeting at 6:45 on January 28, 2018, in Paul Martin Town Hall, 10 Main Street, New Milford, Connecticut.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Item eight, update and possible action regarding Mariel Road Bridge, 05118.
Mr. Zarba, Mr. Stanton, can you come up?
Good evening, everyone. Mike Zarba and Dan Stanton, Director of Public Works and Town Engineer, respectively. See, I think we provided you with some backup information. Try to explain a little bit about it, and then I think we have a bit of a PowerPoint to kind of drive you through maybe some of the issues that we're dealing with out on Mariel Road Bridge. So Mariel Road Bridge, Bridge Number 05118, under State Project Number 095, and I will, I guess it's 5118, I believe. It's a state local bridge program project that we're under. We're in the design phase of it currently, near the end of the design phase at this point, about 95% complete on the, on the design. But what occurred with this particular bridge is, if you're not familiar with its location, this is the one right at the intersection of West Meeting House Road and Mariel Road. It's actually on Mariel currently. As you head north, right, I'll say, east of the intersection with West Meeting House. As we did our original preliminary design proposal and went to a public informational meeting, we were, at that time, planning on replacing the bridge in kind, effectively in its current location. And with, along with that, was the opportunity, I'll say, or the proposal to close the bridge for construction, during its construction period, to minimize construction timeframe, uh, and frankly, to minimize cost on the project. We heard pretty loud and clear from the public at that meeting that that was unacceptable, to close the road, and roughly, it was somewhere between a five to maybe an eight-mile detour, uh, around that location. With that in mind, in our direction, um, we kinda went back to the drawing board and, um, authorized the consultant firm to study some additional options with the caveat of finding some way of a detour. And what we found, basically, in our second preliminary kinda phase or, or study, was we had a couple of alternatives available to us. One was to build a temporary bridge, um, i.e. a bridge that would be removed upon completion of the project. Second was to build a bridge in a relocated format. In other words, to relocate the current bridge, uh, to a different permanent location. And I believe our third, let's see if we have a third alternative on that, was to also consider a, um, pre-stressed concrete deck with a alternating traffic alternative. And in your packet, I gave you, uh, I think, four estimates, um, of bridges, basically. And I'm gonna try to run you through them with, uh, kinda in order, the way that they're, uh, the way that I'd at least like, like you to hear them. So our current design, the final design that we, that we currently have, is a, um, the alternative that we ended up choosing at that time was to relocate the bridge, um, slightly north of its current location. We relocate a portion of Mariel Road along with that, um, to intersect kinda more at a T-intersection with West Meeting House Road. The bridge technically is and would still be on Mariel Road, um, but it would be just a little bit further north than it currently is. Um, the reason we chose that was basically boiled down to cost, um, overall. And the cost differential, uh, so I'm gonna point you to a, an estimate at the bottom right-hand corner of it. It says Cost Estimate Mariel Road FD, meaning Final Design. Um, and this is a, uh, you know, basically a final design estimate from our consulting engineer. Um, it's a three-page estimate, and I'm just gonna point you to page three of that, which is a three, just over three million dollar estimate. Contingencies, construction costs, um, et cetera, are included in that project, including incidentals for construction, uh, itself. So that's three million, twenty thousand dollars is the, uh, the estimate for that one. The other three estimates that you got dealt with, um, previously studied options. So the one that's titled FD, I'm sorry, TD, Cost Option, uh, at the top middle of the, uh, of the page, that was one that was originally done, uh, I mentioned the stage where we went to public informational meeting, the alternatives that were being considered, the, um, the preliminary design estimate that, um, was being considered to replace the bridge in kind with a closure of the road. And we were at just under five million dollars on that estimate, um, at that time. So four million, nine hundred and forty thousand dollars was the estimate for that bridge replacement.
Sorry to interrupt, but I'm having a hard time following which estimate you're talking about, in which order. So can you just go through the cost estimates from first to last, so I know what these pages are, before you dive into the numbers, please?
I don't think they're in the order you're thinking they're in.
So the first thing I see is something that totals two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars.
That's the front side of the page, correct.
Alright.
I went to page two of that, the backside of it. So, uh, without getting into too much, the construction costs on the roadway items are substantially, all they were giving us was the roadway items on the front side of this, so that's all of the, you can see what they are. Rock excavation and asphalt materials, uh, some bridge rails and a variety of different things.
So this is Cost Option One?
Cost Option One, sure. Exactly.
Okay.
That, for any case, that cost, along with the philosophy, I guess I'll say, or the, um, the informational meeting, calling out the fact that we really couldn't, um, close the road down, and we had to go back to the drawing board and figure out some other methodology, um, to look at. And so I'm gonna point you...
So this is, sorry, so this is closing the road down, but still making a T-intersection as opposed to...
Nope. Sorry, so this one's closing the road down and rea- and building the bridge exactly where it is.
Thank you.
Okay? So PD Cost Option is existing bridge location, but road closure.
Got it.
Yeah, it's five point four-eight.
No, it's four point nine-four.
Four-nine.
That's why I'm doing this.
Yeah, no, I knew you were.
I know, I'm, uh, I apologize, I know there's quite a bit of paperwork there with it, but...
Alright.
Next, I'll go through Alternative Six.
Alternative Six.
Okay? It also says PD Cost Option, but it does give Alternative Six. Pre-stressed deck units with temporary bridge.
Five point four-eight.
Again, yeah, you have roadway items on the front page.
Yep.
You can flip to the second page, typically the structure items, all of the bridge aspects, um, and they're there for you to review in detail.
Alright, so five point four-eight correlates to what's my choices there? Road closure, road detour?
That is a temporary bridge. We would build a temporary bridge in some alternate location.
Okay.
Um, most likely in the back, almost about the same location that we're talking about, the proposed, our proposed final design location of the culvert, uh, would be about the proximity where we would build a temporary bridge.
T-intersection, same roadway, though?
Same, we, the bridge...
Temporary bridge would be a T, but the road through the...
Correct.
Okay, I apologize.
Road closure.
No.
Nope, temporary.
No road closure. All, you know, at, at minimum, alternating traffic, but temporary, through a temporary bridge.
Temporary bridge.
Got it.
And then, and then the bridge would be the same when it's done.
Say again?
And the bridge would be the same.
Bridge would be in the same location when it's done, correct. Alternate Seven is, let's call it identical to that, except, instead of building a temporary bridge, Alternate Seven, you, y'all see that one there, too? Says pre-stress.
Five point one-one.
Five point one-zero?
Five point one-one-zero, correct.
And what's that?
That is bridge being built in the cur- in its current location, except we would disassemble only a portion of the existing bridge while we build in the new bridge, or part of the new bridge. We would then relocate traffic onto the newer portion of the bridge, demo the rest of the old bridge, and rebuild the rest of the new bridge.
Yep, one lane alternating, yep. Alright.
Okay? So those are the four options that we considered. You know, I think you can see the reason we picked alternate, well, we don't really have as an alternate, the one that we call Final Design, which is a box culvert location.
So you have an Alternative Six and an Alternative Seven, and were there others that you just threw out, or they weren't?
Correct. They were eliminated in round one, let's, let's call it, the original options.
Okay.
And we went with the box culvert.
So we have all of them here, thank you.
So the one you s- you see, Katie, I'm sorry, is PD Cost Option.
Yep.
Is the, is the one alternative that we considered, building the bridge without a detour. That was the one that we chose in, in round one.
So Mike, another question. How does this compare to the traffic counts? I'm looking at your summary page with the three different cost options. How do the traffic counts compare to Asputuck Ridge Road and that bridge being reconstructed?
Asputuck Ridge Road Bridge has about two thousand, twenty-five hundred cars a day. But that was, well, it's all...
And what about the bridge over by Wellsville? What was the traffic count there?
Well, you said Wellsville?
I think that might be in the neighborhood of like three thousand, thirty-five hundred cars a day.
So this is less, much less. So, in a very simplistic way, if we're a third the volume, why aren't we going for the cheapest alternative? Closing the road and rerouting around?
Not the cheapest, though, is it?
Cause I lived with, I lived with the Asputuck and the Wellsville, and it didn't kill me.
Well, actually, it's the, uh, Mike, sorry, it's not the cheapest. The cheapest one that we came up with are the most cost of, I should say, cheapest, um, cause none of them are cheap, certainly. The, uh, you know, the lowest cost alternative that we could find was a relocation of the current bridge. So we could hit, kinda kill two birds with one stone, I guess we'll say, in terms of keeping traffic open while also building a new structure. The re- so I'll go through some of the technical merits of why the current location and the proposed location are a bit different in terms of the structure costs, and why you're, why we're seeing so, so big of a difference in the cost.
Before we move on to that, so the lowest cost alternative is not one, two, or three, as you've shown, there's something else, there's choice four?
Yeah. The very, I'm sorry, the very first one that I reviewed with you, it actually, at the bottom right-hand side of the page, it says Cost Estimate Mariel Road FD.
Where's that?
Yeah, two put up there.
I don't know, do we have those up there?
Is that the one that would change the location of the bridge?
Yes.
Whose properties is, would we be looking?
The shiple with this, or this is shiple?
Yes. The shiple, correct.
Mike, just ask a question. So, we're talking about the cost here and the moving it or keeping it where it is. What about the, the way it looks and the aesthetic of, of this in the area? There were several comments made about that by residents.
Sure. The aesthetics of the, of the redesigned bridge now, you're saying?
Yeah.
Sure. You know, it's a, it's very similar to the other bridges in that area, uh, that we built recently, including the southern, a little further south on Mariel Road. There's a bridge that was constructed maybe ten or twelve years ago. We finished one about four or five years ago, I think, at the very north end of the Asputuck Ridge Road, uh, as well. All, at least what we've proposed in our, um, bridge design is a, you know, in this case, it's a pre-stressed concrete box culvert. Okay, box culvert, that's, that would go in the channel. Dan's got the picture up there. It's a view, it's a view of it. The, uh, if you can point Dan to the kinda the wing walls and the abutments, um, that show up there. All of those would be what we call form-lined, you know, concrete that's mimicked to look like stone. It's then, you know, painted or stained, uh, in a stone format, um, kinda look. Again, very similar to what you see at Grove Street out here, um, what you see at the north end of Asputuck Ridge Road, uh, and, and other, many other locations around that, uh, where that style has been used. The railings then would typically be either aluminum, uh, look, or black, um, painted, uh, railings, one of the two.
Oh, really?
Um, I'll give you a Mill Street Bridge that was just, uh, finished, has the black, um, railing on it. I believe the north end of Asputuck Ridge Road also has the black, um, painted, um, railings on them as well. You know, it gives it more, a little bit more of the, uh, historic feel, if you wanna say, while still meeting the, um, you know, the, the crash test ratings and the guy rail requirements that, uh, that the bridges have to meet. So the technical side of the, um, the short of it for the current location and the relocated location and, and the alternatives that change in that are, we very much, you know, box culverts tend to be much quicker to install. They're a bit cheaper, uh, typically, um, because you can produce them off-site, you don't have as much, you know, closure time and construction time in the field. But the skew angle that the current bridge is on and the width of the channel at that location, um, kinda prohibits us from putting in a box culvert at that location. So, absent the ability to put a box culvert in, you basically have to go to a, what's, we'll call a deep foundation designer. Drilled foundation of some sort. You have to put piles or piers or, you know, drilled shafts, whatever you wanna call them, um, you know, into the ground that supports your two, you know, your two abutments, and then, of course, you can span across the top of that with a, you know, steel or concrete piece. Um, in our case, we were looking at pre-stressed concrete beams rather than steel beams. Not a whole lot of merit to that necessarily. The, the bigger cost is the foundation issues. Um, you have to put a deep foundation in, you're talking about bringing drill rigs out, um, excavation protection of the channels and, and a variety of things like that. And that drives the cost basically about a million dollars, um, up from any comparison alternatives to a box culvert. And, and that's why the relocated box culvert tends to be a bit cheaper, is basically you eliminate a lot of the foundation issues. Secondly, you also allow it to be built, you know, we'll call it in the dry, which is dry to traffic, not dry to water. You know, where we can build it without traffic impacts, generally speaking. And there's, you know, further cost reductions in, in, you know, on that in the estimate. So, that's kinda the difference between, you know, built, why the three estimates that you see for building the bridge in its current location, no matter which alternative you choose, temporary bridge, um, trying to even just close traffic down, or, um, you know, building it one lane at a time, if you wanna say. But all of them, you know, incur a variety of different costs, but all three of them incur that one major cost, which is foundation, a deep, a deep foundation of some sort, has to go in there to support the bridge, and that's, you know, driving the cost up to begin with, and then the merits of each one change the cost around a little bit more, depending on which alternative we choose.
Paul?
So you're saying that current river configuration can't be adjusted to accommodate a box culvert where it currently is?
The river itself? We did not entertain moving the river.
Just slightly. So you're saying our engineers are telling us it's impossible to construct a box culvert at that location?
The size of that, yeah, the size of that river right now, it's not practical for a box culvert. They don't, as far as we know, we don't make a box culvert that can span the, uh, full span that we'd have. I think a twenty-four-foot box is typically, at least in a pre-cast, you, we can probably do specialty ones, Paul. I don't think we looked into anything more than that, but...
What's the span in this proposed design on the screen?
I'm sorry, the span on it?
Yeah, the width.
Twenty-four feet, right?
So it's the same?
On that.
I think it's the angle.
Now, the old one, it couldn't be spanned at twenty-four feet.
What'd you say?
The, the current location, I don't believe, can be spanned at twenty-four feet. No. It's not the, the relocate, the river's narrower up off of West Meeting House than it is at its current location.
Peter said it was about twenty-four feet, huh?
No, the max that you can get a box culvert is twenty-four feet.
But you're proposing two box culverts, right?
Correct. There are two separate box culverts.
So then couldn't we propose two box culverts where the existing road is?
With a center, I don't believe we could get the hydraulic flow with the center piece there.
You don't believe, or we can't?
I, I think they ran a hydraulic, so I don't believe we can get a, a twin box culverts there.
Cause the micro, based on your cost estimate,
Yep.
the, the fact that that design's more expensive is because of that deep foundation, the micro piles and the concrete's one point eight million?
Yeah, I believe we went through that, um, iteration in the preliminary phase, Paul. I'd have to go back and look at it again, but the original report, I think, looked at that alternative. But, um, the skew angle, the skew angle is also changing, um, quite a bit of the alternatives that are available at that location, uh, for pre-casting structures.
Yeah, but just looking, I mean, that, that's the drawing, that's the existing channel, right?
So the exist- can you point to the existing channel, Dan? Do you mind?
Yeah.
Yeah, the tan area.
So you're seeing the existing flow is more, you know, north to south and then...
Yeah, but just, I, I was out there today, just upstream of the existing bridge that's out there, you know, then the river deflects at that point upstream of it, doesn't it? So it's not, it's actually upstream of where the culvert would be located, that's why I'm asking. Just cause thi- this is extremely invasive to someone's property as opposed to reconstructing it where it is. So, so just so I can better understand the process.
Right there and right there are the current abutments
Yeah.
of the bridge, the current bridge. To replace that area, right there with the box culvert, the skew angle, this, this angle right here, between perpendicular to the bridge and this angle, doesn't allow for conventional casting of box culverts.
So, don't skew it and have the box extend in that area there perpendicular?
The river channel has to stay where it's at. We aren't moving, we're proposing to move the river channel.
You can't.
I'm, I'm not saying move the river channel, I'm just saying have the box extend, you know, if, if south is down on this.
You're saying to make it square like this?
Yeah, and square on the others.
It's not, it's not casting the end of it, it's casting how they join at each successive piece.
Well, I'd like to see the hydraulic calculations.
And I also believe this span between riverbank over here and riverbank over here doesn't allow us to put a twenty-four-foot span, which as far as we've investigated, is the max span that we can get, particularly on a skew angle like that, and I believe when you add the skew to it, it even complicates the casting of those further.
But the, the river where you're proposing to cross it is less wide or as wide where it currently goes underneath the river?
River's less wide here than it is over there.
By how much?
This is where we're proposing to put it, but you can see the flow is almost directly perpendicular to the crossing itself. That's the crossing, and the flow is, is almost directly perpendicular to it. Where here, the skew angle of the center line of the road compared to the water flow, it changes how we...
We just want that with the river, the two spots.
Yeah. Um, I don't, I, I can't tell you exactly what it is. I believe it's something like twenty-eight to thirty feet in this area.
It is, but can you also bring that road east a little bit so you can get a perpendicular cross at that point? I'm just saying, you know, we're, we're... I'm just saying, you know, we're, we're destroying a person's property even though you don't think, in your mind, you don't think it is, to them, it is.
I've worked, I've worked with them throughout this whole process, so I completely understand, you know, what they're going through and what we, you know, what we've tried to do to minimize impacts to them, and we're still, you know, we obviously haven't settled on anything yet, otherwise we wouldn't be standing here, but, you know, the fact is, you're right, we need to continue to work with them to make sure that if this ends up being a chosen alternative or design that we want to, you know, implement, certainly we need to work with them as a town, as a partner, you know, in building this so that it's as least invasive as it can be to their property, I, I fully agree with that.
So, just to better understand the process, right, so back in fifteen or sixteen, you guys had a public information meeting with the neighbors, or we came up with a preliminary design, is that what you said earlier?
Correct.
To replace it in place. So then we spent money on the design, the neighbors came out and said they weren't in favor of the road being closed, so then we proposed taking Mr. Schiphol's property.
So we...
And at no point did it come to the council from then until now?
We didn't, first of all, we didn't disagree with your, your characterization of that. The, we didn't do a design at all, we did a study to determine alternatives that were available, we presented those to the public.
You just said you did hydraulic design calculation.
Well, they have to do hydraulic design calculation to determine what structures are available.
So, a decent amount of money was spent?
Well, the hydraulic doesn't change. No matter what we do, the hydraulics are the hydraulics, you have to run the hydraulics on the channel to understand what structures are available to go in there. So you run the hydraulics, you evaluate different structures that can go in then, we usually are required under state programs or federal to pick at least three alternatives to bring to a public informational meeting, of which we did, of which we talked about.
So what were those alternatives that you brought back then?
I'm sure likely one of them was retrofitting the current bridge, a pre-stressed deck unit bridge, which was the eventual chosen alternative.
Shown in the location?
At least our, I should say, our preferred alternative that we were presenting to the public.
In the same location?
And I believe the third would have been a steel bridge structure, or very well could have been a box culvert structure at that time.
So these were all at the current location of the current bridge?
Correct.
So there, so we proposed at that point a box culvert in the location?
I, I don't believe a box culvert became an alternative at that point because of the skew angle. I think that our engineers looked at it at the time, but my recollection of the report, if you want to say, the preliminary engineering report, was that a box culvert was not feasible there because of the skew angle and because of the span.
Can you please email that report to me?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
So then we had that meeting, neighbors came out that said, "Don't close the road."
Correct. But, you know, that was part of the discussion certainly, but that was, I think, a pretty clear theme for the public that was invited and showed up to the, to the information meeting.
So can you better explain to me the, the decision-making process from you guys of how it went from not closing the road to then having a taking of someone's property without coming to the council at that point and saying, "Hey, we have an issue"?
Sure, the, the process we went through was, we authorized a second, like I said, preliminary engineering study was to evaluate alternates to what the closure, you know, would dictate, so what could we do in the interim? That was discussed with the current mayor at the time, which was Pat Murphy, I believe, you know, during that phase. We received those studies back, we went over the alternatives that were available, the cost estimates that, you know, would be associated with some of those, and chose to design a relocated box culvert. And, by the way, I will say, when we recommissioned that second study, we went out and we met with this particular property owner, the Schiphols and the Golds, at the time, which were the two most affected property owners of a relocated area. We met with them in the field probably two or three times, staked out at least some approximate locations, we had our engineers onsite, at least at the time, to do some, I'll say preliminary, again, preliminary measurements from existing structure to where it would be relocated to. That was all discussed, and I'll say field walked or field measured, you know, with at least, you know, they said the two property owners that, that would be involved in this. When we got further through that design phase, more into the seventy-five or eighty percent phase, we had some better data on exact location, exact size, I believe we went back out and staked out and ribboned out maybe some, some further areas there. That was prior to us, you know, submitting wetland or Army Corps of Engineer applications and things like that. And the process continued along through, from Pat Murphy through Dave Ramback, and now to, you know, Mayor Bass. And no, Paul, I believe, other than at our annual, I guess I was going to say, you know, budget hearings and meetings where we discuss certainly our bridge, five-year bridge program and plan, I believe it was brought up, you know, certainly through those discussions, probably not certainly the detail that's being discussed here tonight.
Can we hear from the Schiphols after Dave's?
Yeah, I have a quick question too, if you can.
Okay.
Mike, so, I understand the box culvert and you're talking about the standard ones, but you have priced a non-standard box culvert?
To our knowledge, we, we have not investigated whether or not you can specially order a different box culvert. As I understand it, in the pre-cast construction world, you, we cannot get a box culvert that will span more than twenty-four feet.
Okay, so if you can't get a pre-cast material, because they're not made...
Correct.
What would be the next thing?
A deep foundation with a, some kind of stringer, girder, spanning, whether that's a concrete girder or a steel girder, but something's going to span the river of a beam or a girder.
Right, as in rivers that are quite a bit wider, and I've seen those, and they're, they're metal, and they, I mean, I've seen a lot of lovely countryside with, as we have here, where the bridges don't pump you in the face and they don't ruin the look and the aesthetics of a neighborhood, so is it a matter of money that you feel we wouldn't find it by, find something that might work in the same location? Forget the closing of the road for just a second, let's just talk about that we have a couple of taxpayers and, and a lot of people in the neighborhood who would like not to have this moved. There are no other options? No other metal configurations or...
We investigated seven options, and, you know, the best that we could come up with for you was the ones that are detailed here.
Right, okay, and so those seven options, which we were just talking about, some of them, and we've talked about others before, what manufacturers or suppliers, is this somebody you use all the time, or is it a standard of the industry? I mean, how far afield did you look? I just, you know, I'm not saying what you did was wrong or, or not usable, but there are places in this country and in the state and right around in Litchfield County where there are bridges replaced like this, and they don't muck up the sightline and the look and everything else, and they manage to do it, I just wonder if we've looked at every place that we possibly could, or asked in some other towns, or if you know of another bridge in a similar situation, to ask somebody there, "Well, how did you guys do this? Box culverts don't come more than twenty-four feet."
Yeah. Well, the conventional options that we looked at are, they're very conventional bridges for a bridge this size.
But no non-conventional options?
A pre-stressed box beam, you know, the beam to span it, a steel stringer beam would be, you know, a decent alternative, you could go to a truss structure if you wanted to, at that point, they aren't typically used in this kind of span length.
Yes, yes.
They tend to be a little bit more expensive, so if you're going to span the Love City Lodge, the truss might be a good, good spot for it?
I'm just asking on behalf of others and myself, if I live there, on that road, is, you know, maybe non-conventional thinking or looking for something a little different for all the time and effort that's been put into this already, and I realize you've done most of it, I just wondered if that had been explored.
That's one of the reasons we hold our, you know, public informational meetings, we look and seek for that kind of input at those meetings.
Bless you, and how are the neighbors, one of them is here tonight, right?
Let's hear from him.
Yeah.
Mike, you had a question?
Yeah, I should comment. The land below the road, that's another property owner, I assume?
So one that says 139 Bucks Rock?
Yeah.
Yes.
Because there's no way to push the, the bridge down so that it could still go across square, I mean, I guess you'd have to shut the...
Horizontal.
Yeah, make it more horizontal so that it wouldn't...
Any other questions right now for Mike or Dan? Schiphol's, can you come up for a moment?
Good evening, everybody. Good evening. I was not planning on speaking this evening. We, oh, yeah, I'm sure we will, I mean, it's, it's a big project and it certainly affects us.
Excuse me, I think you need to state your full name.
Yep. Richard Schiphol, 8 West Meeting House Road.
Thank you.
That is our property. Talking about what Kathy was saying, I think replacing the bridge in the current location, I don't think anybody really is so concerned with what that looks like, because we don't see the underneath of that just because of the natural curve of the river.
Where it is now.
Where it currently is, what ends up happening, well, there's multiple things happening. There was a public information meeting, there were a couple of people up Maryall Road that did not want the bridge closed, they didn't want to be inconvenienced after the other couple of bridges were replaced. So they kind of, you know, guided the way of these poor gentlemen. What I was amazed at is when I met with Mike, there was like a huge set of plans, and maybe we did speak originally, but I know after those plans were, you know, I remember the first time seeing those plans were in my driveway, and it, there was multiple plans, and I didn't really, at that point, know what I was looking at, I knew they were thinking of bringing the, the intersection into our property, I didn't realize how much it ended up being, what you're seeing from the current location, although there's setbacks, so it's not all our property, but with the realignment and the riprap, it comes up 195 feet into our, what we're used to being our property. Just off of that, that little gray area, we have a swimming area, and we'll show you pictures, our kids swim in that area, it's a natural beach area. The issue with this bridge beyond it coming into our property, West Meeting House Road is such a narrow road that state statutes require this bridge to flare out ninety feet, which is almost the size of the current location, but if you don't know what ninety feet is, that's two Greyhound buses in a rural area, it's ridiculous. And I know why they had to do it, to meet the state requirement so they get the money, but at the end of the day, it's, you know, it's crazy. So, and, and also, if, I, I went to the town in the Milford Police Department, because originally people were saying, "Oh, it's a dangerous intersection," there's never been an inter, there's never been an accident since the Milford Police Department has had a computers, never been an inter, and, and there was a jogger in the neighborhood who said, made a very good point, which I was just thinking, our property, but it pushes this intersection right up to a blind corner and a very tight road, which I never even picked that up. And that was, that was a very good point, but beyond that, you know, it's, it's definitely a big inconvenience, and what you guys are not taking into consideration is, yeah, it might be a million dollars less, but our land's not for sale, so there's going to be a fee, some way, shape, or form, to take it. My wife, she was actually smart enough and brought a prepared speech. I have a prepared speech for Wetlands, but I didn't bring it because I didn't think I was speaking.
So, this is a, something that I read to the Wetlands Commission when we met with them before just our meeting. My name's Christine Schiphol, so when I say "you," not you guys, it's being addressed to the Wetlands, I'm too nervous to change the words. My name's Christine Schiphol, I live at 8 West Meeting House Road, and I'm here tonight to voice my concern about the proposal for the replacement of the Maryall Bridge. I know three to four years ago, there was significant upper Maryall neighborhood opposition to replacing the Maryall Bridge in regards to the timeframe needed for construction and whether the lanes of Maryall Road would be closed or partially open for passage. The Public Works Department and Town Engineer did their due diligence to address and meet the needs of those of you who opposed, which are our neighbors. They valued your feedback and opinions, they went back to the drawing board and came up with an alternate proposal that would satisfy those of you who objected to their initial proposal of having the road closed. Unfortunately, those new revised plans, which we're looking at now, have created significant opposition and distress now for the lower Maryall neighborhood, the gateway to my slice of heaven, your slice of heaven, and I hope you can, and I hope you in turn can value our feedback and opinions. And I have some pictures, oh, they're passing around, so they're numbered, one, two, three, four, five, so numbers one through four, you can see that this has been an integral area for my children and their friends to grow up with, there are no Xboxes here, there are no outlets to charge iPhones, this is a nature-loving Eagle Scout in the works here, my youngest son. For slide number five, there'll be significant realignment to the road leading to a three-way intersection, be careful when you come straight down that hill and have to stop in a snowstorm because you're going to end up in a stone wall. Slide number six, this area will be cut clear to make way for the new intersection, your entryway to Maryall is going to drastically change. Slide number seven, there are many factors that go into designing an intersection, this intersection will be twice as wide as the passage over the existing bridge. Slide number eight, to scale the base of the bridge when you're ready to make your turn will be ninety feet wide. A megabus is forty-five feet wide, two megabuses long, tell your friends when they come to visit that they can turn at the interchange. Slide number 10 is an upstream view, I'm standing at the bridge, you can see my husband standing in the middle of the river, this is where the new bridge is proposed to go. And then there's a downstream view, the view my children will have when they play at the beach, their play area that will be permanently and forever affected. Slide number 10 is an aerial view of the impacted land, it may seem like just a little piece to you, but to us, it is enormous. Living in Maryall, we have been dedicated stewards of the land, about fifteen years ago, we purchased lot number forty-seven, which is on one of these slides, and added to our original purchase. We didn't buy it to build a house, we didn't want others to build on it and to disturb the rural characteristic and watershed area of our past rural neighborhood, we wanted to keep it with the integrity of Maryall, a mutual benefit for you and for us, we wanted to make it everlasting so that you and I won't have to change the landscape we all love. We decided the best way to keep it permanently undeveloped was to donate it to Weontonod Plan Trust. We don't permanently change our ability to enjoy activities and recreation on our property, please don't change it, don't reduce our property value, don't jeopardize the safety of my children when they just want to play and have fun. Relocating the bridge and changing the intersection will be a forever impact, new bridge construction is only a temporary inconvenience. Thank you. Can I have that?
No, can Stephanie have that?
Christine, she'll put it right in the record for you if you give her the speech.
I'm sorry, what? Can I have that?
Give her copy of the speech.
The secretary can have the notes, we'll put it right in the public records.
Tom?
We're, the difference is the dollar value here, correct? The cheaper project destroys the neighborhood. We have to try to force somebody to sell us their land, which they're not going to do. As earlier stated from the Churneski people, you know, after the last hearing, I drove up there and saw for myself it was going on in that road, and I agree with the folks, we don't need a bigger bridge. We definitely don't need a bigger bridge in eminent domain here on this corner. You know, I feel from a DOT standpoint, if you've seen the assault that has happened on this town recently with the gigantic highway signs, that I have fifty-six of them in a half a mile in front of my home, I can sympathize with Mr. Schiphol, the folks at Churneski, and all the other people in town who have been assaulted by this, and these two gentlemen know the way I feel about it. So, I, I'm against this, 100%, I think we got to find a way to put the bridge back up, keep everybody happy, and not try to eminent domain, there is no, there's no crisis here that we need to try to, to perform eminent domain on Mr. Schiphol's property, I, I think this is a bad idea. However, we've got to build this bridge, which I know, I've traveled on it, it is a disaster, I know what you're up against, but it's a dollar value here that we're talking about, right? Eminent domain is cheaper, but in the long run, it's not going to be, it's not going to be cheaper, because I'm sure Mr. Schiphol and his, and his lovely wife and family are going to engage an attorney who will happily take this and, and, and create a, a name for himself in the legal field while he's defending this nice couple. I, I just, I just find this is very invasive, just like what has happened to us recently with this highway sign assault that is on scenic roads all over the Milfords, but that's for another discussion. So I'm, I'm going to vote against this. And anything that, vote against anything that's going to impact one of our residents and, and create some sort of eminent domain situation, I think it's preposterous. Thank you.
Katie?
Mike, how long would the road be closed?
If it was, you're saying if it was built in its current location with a road closure? Well, we, we believe we can do it in one full construction season, if we were able to start, you know, first April...
Like eight months.
We would hope that we could get it open, or we should be able to get it open by December 1st.
How long did, sorry, dinner. How long did Lower Aspatuck take?
Longer than that, but it was one lane alternating.
Right.
It was a different type of construction.
Paul?
How long did Mill Street take?
Yeah, there was a winter shutdown, but that was Drill Chef Foundation, too. As well.
So you're going to give us all that information? We requested the preliminary engineering assessment report, the preliminary cost estimates.
You believe, you have the preliminary cost estimates.
That's what they were at the original?
Yeah, they would have only done the preliminary cost estimate on the chosen alternative, which was closure, the one that...
These are dated 2018. I thought you said 2016, there was an assessment done and estimates done then. I want to see those. I want to see all the engineering calculations. And then the current design plans as well that are at 95%.
And I'd like to, I'd like to see the last three bridges that were done. What was the original design estimate? What was the actual? And how long did it actually take? What was the initial timeframe estimate?
So, current bridges, Aspatuck, River.
The last three bridges we did in town, yep.
Yep, which include Mill.
Which would include the Lower Aspatuck one. And then what other, well, the two were the most recent, just so we know. Once we have a cost and a timeframe, what does it really end up being?
And a quick question, Mike. Well, how long is the detour if the bridge is closed?
I think Dan has a map up here that he can show you.
There's a bunch of maps in the package.
I'd say you might know after...
They want to speak to the numbers here. So, I mean, typically if you were going from the beginning of Mariel to, you know, middle neighborhood here, it's four minutes, 2.3 miles. The detour around, if you utilize Bucks Rock, East Bucks Rock, you know, it's about 6.5 miles. And then the alternative is to detour up West Meeting House, which is slightly shorter.
But you're talking about the part of Bucks Rock that's not paved?
Yeah.
Excuse me, coming back to the two sections of Bucks Rock that we're talking about.
You have to go on.
If you excuse a little bit of lag, maybe, then maybe just because you're utilizing Google Maps, but it's that first right.
But there's part there that's not paved.
Both of those sections are paved. And this avoids utilizing Bucks Rock Road, which is...
I see. So it's 12 minutes to go around.
Yeah, that's East Bucks Rock to Van Car, I believe, to 202.
How long would you say the time span to build the bridge is the same as about three months?
Eight months.
You know, it's an aggressive schedule, but it's, you know, the whole point or reason we thought about a full closure was it gives us the opportunity to do it in one full construction season without having to keep it closed over the winter period. That's, you know, you know, there's a little bit of luck that has to happen for that to be the case, but that would be the best case scenario. The worst case scenario obviously would be that there's some kind of delay and it happened on the southern bridge of Mariel, I think I mentioned earlier. They had some kind of foundation, I wasn't here at the time, but they had some kind of foundation problem, issue that they could not resolve quickly and they ended up, which I think is why the northern Mariel people were very sensitive to a road closure here, because they went through two years of road closure, I think, on that project, or almost two years of road closure, so.
Are you speaking of the bridges just past the curve as you go south towards town on Mariel?
It would be in between this bridge
Yep.
and where Long Mountain takes off. It'd be almost right in between.
Yep, I know the bridge you're talking about.
Yep.
As long as it doesn't mess with any Mal River or something.
Not to belabor this point, but I have to concur with what Councilman Esposito said. I am fully against eminent domain for our residents. That is just not what our town is about. Our town is about neighborhoods and scenic beauty and that's just not the right thing to do in our neighborhood.
That's not something Public Works was pursuing. We want to work with our neighbors and...
Yes.
And I don't mean to put words in your mouth. To that effect, I just want to state my position.
Let me be clear. I don't want to speak for Richard, and Richard certainly, you know, can stand up here. Richard and his wife have been nothing but professional about it. We've discussed on several occasions alternates, availability of things that, you know, we would try to entertain and look with them on. You know, we've never talked eminent domain. We've never talked, you know, that we were going to, that this was going to be forced down our throat somehow. We've always been engaged with them, you know, and like I said, he can nod, you can tell you, "No, I'm full of it," but I've, we've tried to be, at least, and I hope he does agree, you know, nothing but open and honest with them about what's going on and try to engage them in the process throughout the time. That's not to say this is the best alternative. That's, I'm telling you what the differences are in terms of cost, which I believe generally is a topic of discussion that we have. So, you know, when I'm entertaining it, it's simply, you know, there are a lot of cost-related factors here that I don't believe I've come to the table yet and been able to stand here and tell you why you should allocate $2.5 million more on a project than some other alternative. So, that's, you know, why we're here, why we're discussing it. There's merits to both. There's no doubt about that. But, you know, my job with you typically is money-related. My job with them certainly is public relations. You know, we've talked about maybe some alternatives we can look at or do to help alleviate some of the pain, but I believe they're right. I don't think we can fully eliminate the implications that it's going to have on their property. That's, you know, not to say that it's not a valid alternative, but, you know, their points obviously are valid and we've tried to work through things that we can try to get to to make it at least more livable for them. And certainly, we understand that until it was built, that's never going to be known. And we all know that at that point, it's obviously it's too late. So, you know, it's something we have to decide together. We have to decide which way we're going to go and, you know, we have to move on with whatever design that we choose to go. And I'm looking for your guidance on that as much as, you know, whether that's authorizing me to go and design a project that we know costs more money. But I don't believe that's a decision that I should make myself. I think I've talked about it with the mayor several times, and I think he doesn't believe that it's a decision he and I should make by ourselves. So, we're here discussing it and that's why we're discussing it. And, you know, we'll move forward from that point.
Mike?
Yeah, I just, I mean, just, the point of, it seems like sometimes Mike gets up here and gets bashed. If we found out later that there was a design that was going to save the town a million dollars and we didn't hear about it, we'd be upset. So, his job is to present it all to us and we can make the decision. So, he found, he came up with a way that saves us money and we're going to look at it and say, "You know what? It might save us money, but it's not in the best interest of the town." That's our job, right?
Katie?
Clearly, you're right, Mike. Of course, we always want to know about the cost and nobody beating up at that. How long has this bridge got before it becomes a crisis?
It is a risk.
Yeah, it's in need of...
Well, I saw the rating, but, you know, I didn't bother to look up what all that meant, so. Next week, next year?
Well, let's put, you know, we're at a stage now, you know, we're most likely not going to get to construction in 2019 anyways. But we certainly need to put a schedule together here that puts us through the design phase and permitting phase by the end of 2019 so that we can get this bridge to construction in 2020.
Ready for 2020?
Yes.
Can I just throw one question out? Can we look, listen, I traveled over the old Tappan Zee Bridge for a year and a half and watched five miles of a gargantuan bridge go up in lightning fast time. Is there any method at all to accelerate some of this bridge construction on the local level? It seems like, I've seen bridges that were still under construction, not our fault, but are there any methods to make this a quicker process than eight months, nine months? I mean, if you could build the new Tappan Zee Bridge in a year and a half, two years. I know they had an unlimited budget and we don't, but are there any other alternatives to bring in precast sections of your steel-spanned bridge? Because I watched huge pieces of that bridge roll down the highway and get craned into place. I'm just throwing it out there. I'm not looking for an answer now, but if there's any alternatives you can bring forward to us out in the future of other new methods or methods that are accelerating this construction, it would be a great help for us all.
You're hitting, the term is exactly what you're saying. Accelerated bridge construction is, you know, it's certainly out there.
It'd be soon.
I cannot speak with a whole lot of knowledge in terms of cost differential. Clearly, time is money. There's, you know, I'm going to put that out there. You know, there's no doubt that doing it that way, it's a partnership to begin with, with your designer and your contractor. And a lot of the times, you may go design-build on a project like that where you want to do accelerated bridge construction because there are components that are best done in, how would you say, you need your contractor engaged early because they have to do a certain amount of off-site work, you know, whether that's constructing all of these precast units before, you know, we get to the fully constructibility time when you actually send it out in the field and start doing work. But I will say, one of the biggest problems we have, at least in a location like this, is the river permits that go along with Army Corps of Engineers and Inland Wetlands and how we can construct the foundations. That's the hardest thing that we have to time out on a project like that is how you take out the old bridge and get your new foundations. And a lot of these, you know, ones that are done in accelerated bridges are typically bridges over roadways. Much different process in terms of what you put in for foundations. There are a lot of times you're just pouring concrete down there, sort of chopping all the concrete out and reporing, you know, new foundations. Tends to help the bridge construction timeframe quite a bit. So you're only talking about, you know, a couple of weeks of delay time when you're talking about pouring concrete, whereas you're talking about getting a machine down into a wetland and drilling 30 or 40 piles on each side of this river. And, you know, that's a, you know, a time-consuming process that you can't just do without, you know, some pre-planning and planning ahead. But absolutely, your point well taken, Tom. There are alternatives. We can certainly consider those. They generally will come with a premium to some degree, but they can be considered and we're certainly happy to consider them.
Just look, just looking real quick. It seems like about, for $200,000, you can do one lay at a time. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, for $200,000?
Yeah, because you said existing bridge closure road was 4.9 million and the other was 5.1, wasn't it?
4.95 and 5.1.
Yes, there's a factor of it's not as efficient to keep the existing bridge.
No, I know, because that's an option, too, that allows people to still travel through the area without having to go all the way around.
Paul?
So this project's a cost share between us, we're 47%, is it, or 53%?
We're 53 and the state's 47.
So, what, I noticed we're holding 43% for contingency and incidentals, which in my opinion is insane. Is that a trigger of the state requirements?
Yeah, those are, the numbers that are included in there are given by the state.
Okay, so if we're automatically increasing by approximately 43% right off the bat, that's almost equivalent to what the state's share is. So are there reductions in design standards that we can do if we don't use the state's money, since they're dragging up the cost already equivalent to what their share is?
Generally, yes, we can. We don't have to meet some of the same standards, particularly, I think the ship has just talked about some of the radiuses. You know, in order to go and get state money, we would actually have to go through a waiver process with the DOT where we request, and we can request waivers to some of those things, but you have to make a pretty good pitch and have to have some, you know, pretty good background information as to why that would be the case. But we certainly could do that if that's, you know, something to be considered, but...
I think we should try to be creative. I mean, to me, it's just absurd that we're contemplating spending this much on one bridge. In that it appears 43% of the cost, I mean, granted, I know we're going to have overruns, but with really good plans, is triggered by the fact that we have to do it with the state requirements. So, I'd actually like to explore that alternative as well. What design standards could we reduce and what would the...
And what's the cost?
Decreasing construction costs. And then that helps us from an administrative perspective as well and time perspective of going through that, having them approve everything.
So it can cost us $3 million or it can cost us $3 million, right? 60% of $5 million?
Yeah, I believe you have to...
And we don't have to wait for their approval of all the paperwork. Nothing has to go through them or just a ton of administrative time.
It's absurd that they, that the state can drive the cost of something like this up.
Any other questions for Mike and Dan? All right, so takeaways, we're going to look at, if we don't use state funds, what what methods we can use, yep, and what opportunities we have for use of the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Mullins.
Dr. Mullins?
That sounded expensive.
I never pulled it back.
Do you need this?
Yes, please. We're at item 9, Mayor?
Yep.
No, I'm passing these out.
Let me give you the... Works to that.
This is for the other side, is it? I can pass out? This is one set.
Yep, that's one set.
That's one set. Would you pass that down to, pass that down to Peter?
They're all, they're all sets.
One inch for those. This is one sheet. This is another set.
Yep.
You gave me more than one here. Can we turn the fan off for a minute?
Yeah.
You turn the fan on.
There's two sets here.
Well, it says neutralization.
Wait, I got...
That's neutralization.
Okay, so this is one. You sure?
I have one set of 13, 14, 15.
All right, this is one set.
You need page 16 somewhere?
I need one more set. I can share a fourth.
They've been blowing around.
One for Lisa?
But she's gone, right?
She's gone.
I'm missing some sheets here.
Do you have gas or not?
What about this one? Is that just...
I need this one here.
I haven't seen that one, have I? No, I haven't seen that.
Hey, Matt, can you turn it for a sec?
I like a, yeah, can you make me 10? Yeah, just turn it up.
So, is Matt to make the copies from one more sheet? I thought I had the copies there. I put the John Pettibone building update on. One of the recommendations that came from our utilization committee was the creation of cost centers. was the creation of cost centers for our buildings. As of right now, all of our buildings are all co-mingled into one account. So, you really can't see the cost effectiveness. So, for instance, all the building's energy, building usage, all of its costs, all go under one account. So, we're moving forward into breaking them all up into each building. And then, per square foot for each department are then going to be allocated to them so that we can all see what the true cost is to operate each department. So, we're kind of migrating over to that, so it's a work in progress. So, the first kind of thing I wanted to show you was, one of the things that I asked our Public Works Director, Mike Zarba, to talk about is what the actual cost would be on a facility. Maintenance costs per employee, would it be to actually maintain the Pettibone building if it was fully implemented? So, you can see on the budgetary book that we had was that right now, we have one maintenance tech, and that position is at 53,435.20. To bring it up, he would be requesting another three of those for four, which would be part of our contractual obligation for that building, per square foot for the union contract. That'd be an additional 130,291. You then move to next page, it'd be fourteen.
Just so everybody knows, so make sure you're looking at the right page.
Yeah, page thirteen.
Yep, okay, so the bottom 130,291 is additional.
To the 53,435?
Correct, thanks.
Then you go into where he's actually talking about the additional overtime to cover the additional 75,000 square feet. At JPS, he's putting an additional $10,000 in for that line item. You go down to fixed charges, where he's talking about systems testing, certification, pest control, alarms and surveillance. He's adding an additional $20,000 to that. Then he's talking about additional uniforms for staff, which would be $2,300 there. Safety supplies would be another 2,000. Custodial supplies would be another 7,000. So, there's your additional manpower costs for the building. The next page while, while Matt is. Yep, building supplies.
Well, we got it here, and then you got it here.
Yep.
So, it's actually two.
Just 7,000.
Oh, see, it's a line here on page fifteen, and then it's a line. So, it's only one 7,000.
Correct. Then moving on to the next handout that I gave you was, and tracking the energy costs. Thank you, Matt. So, I'm going to hand this out. I had asked our finance department to break out within the segments that we have in our munis to break out the portion that is billed to Pettibone. And you can see those, and this is at 30% capacity, these numbers, which is where we're at for the billing.
120,000, is that the current 30% capacity?
Correct. So, one of the things that you're going to see is, is when you're looking, these are by quarter. And if you're going to take the first quarter 18 to the fourth quarter, that's, you come up with a number there, and it's for electric, heat, sewer, trash pickup, water. One of the ones that is not in this number, I'm getting some more numbers in, is wifi is $7,600 annually for, to have wifi in the building. That's 7,600, I'm getting the bill for that. One of the things I wanted to make note is our new bill that we just got. This is just for gas itself, for that building. As you can see, the billing for this last month was 17,685.18, which was, which was much higher than the previous month. So, I've asked Eversource to do an audit. They brought it up to see why our usage is three times as high as it was in the previous month. See, this is in the nominally, this is gas.
Gas, right, gas accounts.
This is gas, because we run on natural gas there.
So, this is just the current bill?
Correct.
Prior to that, it was 5,700.
Correct.
Hasn't been cold.
So, and we're going to continue, every month, I'm going to be bringing in new ones for different buildings. So, Town Hall will be the next one, to where we're going to go through building by building. So that when we're going into the budgetary process, we know what the costs are per building. I'm going to, and then the goal is, within each cost center, to break it out per square foot, what it is. And if, for instance, Town Hall, whatever the department is, their square footage, then it would be built into their cost centers. Any questions?
So, Pete, this number here is a 120, that's the total for expenditures for the year, correct?
Correct.
And then the other expenditures were for the, for the two men being on and the uniforms and such, correct?
Right, if we're, right.
Right.
This would be the estimated cost, correct?
So, between the two of them, you had 176,600, then you had 120,000 together. You add those up, it's almost $300,000, which is almost $25,000 a month.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And they don't have landline phones any longer in that building, right?
No, their phones are.
Where's the cost for that?
That, we're getting, I'm getting that, that's not.
Okay, so besides the wifi, we're also going to get phones?
Paul, did you ever say, I'm sorry. Tom?
Listen, this is smart to do. Everybody who owns real estate does not, you know, aggregate their 10 buildings together. They do it building by building, and find ways to save. So, I think this is a very smart process to break all the buildings up. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Next is Celtic Energy, is Walt Donza here? He is the representative for Celtic. I see he's not here, I like to entertain it, I push this off to the next meeting, since he's not here. Thank you.
Item 10, table, till the 28th.
Thank you.
Move to table, item 10.
Can I just say it's the town attorney, the first one here?
Oh, sure.
The question is table versus postponed?
Yes.
Table means you're going to put it off to something later in that, in the same meeting. Postponed means to a definite date and time, in this case, January 28th.
I would like to make a motion, postpone it to our next town council meeting of January 28th.
Second, then.
Any discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, thank you. Next, public hearings.
Not anymore. Item 11. Motion to approve the amendments to ordinance, chapter 2A, alarms to the Code of Ordinances. This is second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Mike?
I'm opposed.
Okay.
I'm opposed to. Oh, I'm sorry, who's opposed? Did we have, did you ask for discussion? I missed that.
What's that?
You didn't ask about discussion.
Want to discuss it?
Well, I'd like to say why I'm voting against it. For those that weren't here for our earlier meeting, the gentleman who's on our alarm committee and owns an alarm company, brought up a few points that I found very odd, that we had not entertained any input from an alarm person. I understand our police department has an opinion, but he brought up several points. He said that our, the way it was written was very good. But he brought up a few things that just, and he gave us reasons, not just why he thought they didn't work, but why they don't work in other towns. For instance, leaving an alarm ringing for 30 minutes. If that happened to my house, next door to me, I would probably wonder why. But anyway, I just think that the fact that we've spent all the time and effort to do this, to change it, and never consulted even our own alarm guy, was a little odd. So, I'm going to say no, I think we haven't fully investigated what this ought to say.
So, as you're aware, I gave Attorney Grimes an issue with some of the things that I had found in reading the language, but I think this has been going on for almost six months now. There's been multiple articles in both the Spectrum, and there was an article in the News-Dimes. There were a ton of legal notices that were done, because we've had multiple public hearings on it. So, what were this gentleman's specific concerns that you have an issue with, so we can potentially address them?
Well, the first thing that he brought up was about the 30 minutes of allowing things to read. He said that it's really more like eight minutes maximum of 15 minutes.
Hold on, let's just go point by point.
Oh, I only noted two that I thought at that point I had heard enough. The fact that keeping a list of numbers on buildings is futile because people don't stay. So, you could have a name of a contact at Kimberly-Clark, and the guy hasn't worked there for five years, that knocks boxes, you know what that is?
Yeah.
Yep, that that is a far more efficient manner, even for residents, rather than just for buildings.
This guy should know it's already required by ordinance that each building has a knockbox already.
But it's not in our ordinance.
We have a separate ordinance that requires it.
Okay, well, maybe he didn't read that.
So, I'm just saying, he's bringing up comments that he's probably not aware are already covered in other ordinances.
Well, he should be, this gentleman, Jim Corbett, he sits on our New Milford ordinance.
Karen brought that to us as fire marshal, and that was implemented five or six years ago.
I know, I just, I think it's important that our police department had a lot of reasons for some of the things that were changed. But they're not in the alarm business, nor is the alarm man in the police business.
So, besides the eight versus 30 minutes, is there anything else?
There were, I didn't write them all down, Paul, and I'm overruled here. I just thought that it was interesting and a little disconcerting to me that we never brought in somebody from the alarm side of things. It's just sort of one of those things, we don't know what we don't know. It's a small item, but I still think that it would.
He generally said it's good, it was a good thing, and it was well done, and he just had some points.
That's all I had to say.
Katie, you're kicking around number eight, then?
The first, remember when we were here for the public, was it the hearing or the town meeting, whichever it was, for the alarms? And the gentleman who was here, Jim Corbett, he made several comments about how great, we had written it up, but that there were some items that were not.
Like the 30-minute.
Yes, they were not practical, nor efficient, nor in practical use possible. So, I'm just stating.
What are you suggesting, then, Matt?
I think that they should have consulted somebody in the alarm business, if not our own ordinance man. Or, you know, that's what I would like them to do, to just ask him the things he brought up, perhaps he's.
I guess what I'm asking is, we could defeat this then and go back to the drawing board?
I just, I'm just voting, my feeling is not go back to the drawing board, but have somebody give us the reasons from the alarm side for what he brought up. I mean, is it futile to ask to keep a list? I'm not in the business, I don't know.
So, can we tweak this ordinance?
Yes, we can, but I, my experience is, once we improve something, nothing ever changes to it.
I guess that's a question to tweak it.
Just, just for the record, a couple of things. First of all, no, the public hearing is closed, this ordinance has to go up or down as it is at this point. So, if, and if it goes down as it is, then you are starting from scratch on the ordinance.
Well, we certainly don't want to do that all over again. However, what are, how do we go about tweaking it, Attorney Grimes?
You would have, you would literally be starting from scratch. It's been, I mean, you've closed the public hearing now.
No, if we go with it this way, can it be amended in any way after the fact?
Somebody could propose that, sure, it could be amended.
That's what I'm asking.
But to amend it, to amend it, then you have to go through public.
That's right. So, then the council has the right to adopt amendments?
Oh, yeah. To propose, you could propose an amendment to that process.
That's good, okay, thank you.
The police department was the sponsor of this ordinance, so.
Matt, I don't need to be rude, and I'm going to say, I expected the police department to be in. But when a gentleman who's in the business, I don't care what, if it was bridge business, car business, painting business, I like to hear what they have to say, and he had some very interesting comments. So, we can take it up in the next meeting.
That wasn't, that wasn't the point that I was making. What I'm saying is, the council could be the sponsor of an amendment to the ordinance, like the police department is the sponsor of this ordinance, that's what I was.
Oh, under those circumstances, Mayor, I will go ahead and vote yes, go ahead.
Okay.
I'll vote yes, too.
So, we have a.
Two and a half.
Right.
Congratulations, pass.
Next.
Okay.
B, 11B.
Uh, move to approve the addition of ordinance, chapter, chapter 5B, Article 3, inspection fees to the Code of Ordinances.
Any discussion on the ordinance?
Yeah, I just quickly, now, the one thing he said about fees is, they got to be the right amount. If they're too high, people will get rid of their alarms, if they're too low, they don't do anything, so that's.
This is a.
This is different, we have to bring that up later, Mike. We have to bring that up the next time.
Oh, this is for?
This is inspection fees.
Oh, very much, correct. Take it back. Don't record that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, thank you.
Hey, Pete, since you have to tell him this is sworn in, can we ask for his comments and write it, so we can look at it?
Yep.
Sure.
Motion to adjourn, we have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, thank you, thank you, everyone.
Happy New Year.